Call this regular school committee meeting Monday, October 3rd, 6:00 PM. To order. Ms. Reynolds, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Quick question and point of order. When we do committee reports, this is supposed to be a report by the chair of that committee on the committee meeting, correct? Not about an individual doing things. It's a report on the policy committee meeting and discussing changes to the policies. Is that correct?
Well, the individual in this case is the school committee chair, would you say?
No, no, you, but I...
You mean the other ones? The other categories?
It's reporting on the actual committee meeting.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Resource committee.
We did not have a meeting, so there may be no report.
School building needs.
We did not have a meeting. It had canceled because of lack of quorum, but I have one comment. I just wanted to make sure that Mrs. Reynolds got all the information on the solar panels. Extensive research was done and sent to Mrs. Reynolds. Was there any further questions on that, Mrs. Reynolds?
Not at this time, no.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Policy committee.
Nothing to report at this time.
Any questions? Thank you. Student support committee. That would be...
Dr. Knight?
Dr. Knight, she is...
She's unmuted.
She needs to unmute.
Yep, there she is. Dr. Knight.
Unmute. Nope, unmute.
Unmute.
You're muted. There you go. Nope.
No, we can't hear you, Dr. Knight. It says you're muted still.
Oh.
There you go, there you go.
All right. Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. School personnel committee, nothing to report at this time. Executive committee. Nothing as well. Student reps.
Last week, on Wednesday, September 8th, the administration received a Stop It! app notification regarding a bomb threat at Pittsburgh High, which occurred during the lunch period. All the necessary precautions were taken. The fire alarm was pulled and all the students and staff evacuated in a swift manner. Bus, special transportation, and parent pickup students, as well as student drivers, were dismissed in an orderly fashion. The administration believed that the bomb threat was a TikTok challenge. The Pittsburgh Police and the Fire Department conducted a search throughout. Pittsburgh High, also the state police, conducted a thorough search, and nothing was found. On October 7th, Pittsburgh High students will receive their progress reports as a check-in on their academic performance and grades for each class. Also, it's Hispanic Heritage Month, and during G Block on that same day, there will be an assembly. It will take place from 1:10 PM to 2:00 PM in the Pittsburgh High auditorium, where students from the Multicultural Club and other Hispanic students will take part in displaying their diverse Hispanic heritage. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's really one, there's two big topics of order that have happened in the past week. First was the lockdown. There was a bomb threat. Tia just went over it, and it is the opinion of the majority of students that it went considerably better than the lockdown. So, the evacuation of the school went extremely smoothly and extremely quickly. Communication was extremely swift. We knew within 10 or 15 minutes of the bomb threat being made that it was a bomb threat and that we needed to get away from the school. There was no sense of chaos from parents coming in, as school was dismissed early. So, they organized buses to come, and they kept the parents on Ashby State Road instead of having them come in, preventing any traffic conflicts and preventing any issues from arising with student pickup. So, all in all, it went considerably better, and I think it shows a great deal of improvement on the part of the administration. The second thing is a far more unfortunate factor, and this is more of, I just, our student body is currently in mourning. We recently lost one of, a beloved teacher of all, beloved by all students. Mr. Raff passed away this weekend, and the Pittsburgh High School community has come together to celebrate his life and to grieve, and we are being supported by our administration. There was a memorial letter drive today in the library where students came together and wrote down memories of Mr. Raff that they see in a positive light, which honestly far, far, far exceed the negative. He will be missed in the Pittsburgh High School community. It is a sad day indeed. On a slightly less serious note, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, which is a new organization that I am a part of, is planning their first-ever delegate assembly. So, all of the me and Tia's from all across the state are invited to confer at a, at the same place that we did in February, at a hotel in Marlboro, and we're going to do some workshops. We're going to vote on the bylaws of the new organization. We're going to elect an executive board, and that executive board is going to appoint directors of resources, communication, finances, curriculum, and legislative affairs. So, we're sort of getting this organization off the ground. We've already held two conferences, one in September that I helped to plan, and one in May. So, that's good news for student reps across the state, so now our voices are a little bit more amplified. The other thing I wanted to mention, and this is more of a housekeeping thing, which is that our student advisory council has started meeting. I'm not entirely sure of what Ms. Jarrett's plans are for the meeting's schedule. She's alluded to it being weekly. Historically, it was monthly, but basically, that's going to allow me and Tia to have a much greater degree of familiarity with the student body. So, the field of student wrapping is doing well in Pittsburgh.
Questions? Seeing on, moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of August 29th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of September 12th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Communications. Anyone wishing to make a communications statement? Seeing none, public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, please go up to the podium. Thank you.
Chalklin Wache, Pittsburgh resident. I'm speaking on agenda item number six. At your last meeting, a student was reluctant to give her address, and you forced her to do so in order to give a public comment. This is wrong. I don't know her or her circumstances, but there are a variety of valid reasons people don't want to give their address. Secretary of State Bill Galvin even set up a program to provide victims of domestic violence with fake addresses to protect them. However, not everyone who could benefit from this program knows about it or participates in it. All you need to know is that someone is a Pittsburgh resident. Since some of you seem clueless, let me tell you why I don't like giving my address. He hit me on the leg. He shoved me up against a wall. He said I should break your nose and then you'll respect me. He locked me out of the apartment, barefoot in the middle of winter. He threatened to abscond with our baby to another country so I would never see my child again. He sexually assaulted me and wouldn't stop, even though I kept saying no until I started crying. He threatened to kill me. After Nicole Brown Simpson was murdered, he said I should OJ Simpson your bleep. At Clinton District Court, he admitted all the facts but told the judge he did nothing wrong. Were it not for the assistance of battered women's resources, now called Stay Plan, instead of standing before you tonight, I might be lying in the grave. So, you should vote to suspend the rules and eliminate the address requirement before you leave tonight. No one should have to jeopardize her safety to participate in a public meeting. You all love to say safety is your top priority. Prove it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have some visitors with us from TNTP. We have Anna Kelly and Marcellus Holt here. Earlier this evening, we had a workshop with the school committee to debrief the talent landscape analysis, which was phase one, and also start talking about some of the recommendations phase that TNTP is working with the district administration through this month. And then, they hand the ball over to us, and we begin implementation. So, tonight, they have a summary presentation to share with you all and the public. So, I'd like to welcome back or welcome Anna Kelly and Marcellus Holt from TNTP to the table here.
All right. So, we'll go ahead. Are you able to see our presentation?
Hold on, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
Five-second time delay, so I think we're good now.
Ah, you're all set.
So, we're just going to give a brief overview of the work we've been doing with Pittsburgh for the past eight months. So, Pittsburgh has joined a cohort of 15 grantees participating in a Driving Towards Diversity cohort with the Bar Foundation. So, as part of this work, TNTP worked with a core team at Pittsburgh to conduct a landscape analysis. So, that's a comprehensive analysis of the district's talent systems and teacher workforce. So, we were looking at recruitment, selection, retention, overall workforce. We were analyzing quantitative data and speaking with stakeholders, so students, one of whom is in this room, hi, students, teachers, and other stakeholders at Pittsburgh to inform the analysis. And something that we wanted to just mention is how much we appreciated working with the entire Pittsburgh community on this. So, first data point that we wanted to share from our findings is that Pittsburgh has a really racially and ethnically diverse community. The student body at Pittsburgh Public Schools reflects that diversity. Approximately three-quarters of Pittsburgh students are students of color, and more than half of Pittsburgh students identify as Hispanic, as you can see in this chart, but only 6% of school leaders and 9% of teachers in Pittsburgh identify as people of color. So, this misalignment between the racial and ethnic composition of students and the staff in their schools could be impacting the outcomes and experiences of students of color in the district. That's because research tells us that students with teachers of the same race are less likely to be suspended, they are more likely to be referred to gifted programs, and they are more likely to complete high school and go on to college. Unfortunately, relatively few students of color in Pittsburgh had a teacher of the same race and ethnicity during the 2020-2021 school year. Only 5% of black students had a black teacher. Only 5% of Asian students had an Asian teacher, and only one-quarter of Hispanic students at Pittsburgh had a Hispanic teacher. That's for any class, so just one class.
So, before we discuss the findings and recommendations from our report, we wanted to pause to ground ourselves in the reason behind this work, which is students. Students noticed that the teacher-to-student demographics in Pittsburgh do not match, and the majority of the students who participated in our focus groups did not have teach, shared that they did not have, some shared that they didn't have teachers that shared their racial identity. But they believe that having educators who share their racial identity makes them more comfortable and better understood. So, one student shared that I think having a teacher with the same ethnicity as you is a more comfortable feeling. I feel like you can relate to them more on some certain things and also feel comfortable speaking your mind. Another student also shared that the school is very diverse. Having a diverse teaching staff, when they can relate to the kids and help them in a different way than a non-minority, would just benefit kids here overall. It's also important to know that Pittsburgh families, that they are, have also recognized the importance of having educators who also share their children's identities as well. Speaking with parents and families, parents also indicated that they would like to see that their students have the, one parent called it "the luxury" of being exposed to diversity in the classroom. So, moving into the findings, so now that we have centered ourselves on the why behind this work, we want to review the findings from our talent landscape analysis and also the recommendations that we provided to Pittsburgh Public Schools. And we did that by way of a talent landscape overview, which was shared with the Pittsburgh Public Schools over the summertime. And so, what we're sharing today is a more condensed version of these findings and subsequent recommendations. And the goal in sharing this work more broadly with stakeholders is to refine the recommendations based on Pittsburgh's priorities and capacity, and then also be able to create, as Superintendent Jokula was mentioning earlier, an implementation plan that the district will subsequently enact on and put into action after, once it's completed. So, the findings, finding one, the racial identities of Pittsburgh staff do not align with student identities, but students and families want to see that change. The second finding was Pittsburgh is piloting an innovative strategy for a homegrown teacher workforce, but it will take time to see results. The third finding, Pittsburgh is not hiring more diverse teachers due to missed opportunities in the recruitment and selection process. And finding four, there is a lower retention rate of BIPOC teachers, Black, Indigenous, people of color. And finding number five, there is not yet a shared vision of or commitment amongst Pittsburgh Public Schools stakeholders for diversifying the teacher workforce.
All right, so you can see on this slide an overview of the recommendations that TNTP has shared with Pittsburgh. These are grounded in the findings of the landscape analysis and the needs of students, families, and teachers to continue the work to diversify the Pittsburgh workforce. And on the next slide here, you can see a little bit more detail about each of the recommendations that TNTP has shared with Pittsburgh. We think there is an opportunity to really include students and families deeply in this work. Some of the cultural celebrations that have been mentioned tonight are a great example of this, finding ways to continue and extend those across the district and to bring students into the hiring process. We also think that continuing to invest in the Grow Your Own programs that Pittsburgh has been developing is a really core strategy for the district. We see a lot of promise there, and we're excited to see those expand. We also think that there are some steps Pittsburgh can take to enhance the recruitment and selection of teachers of color, thinking about building out the value proposition for Pittsburgh specifically for teachers of color to come work here, thinking about some ways to do additional outreach and dissemination of some of the materials Pittsburgh has already created to recruit teachers of color, and also creating some centralized hiring materials that principals can use with their staffs to ensure that they're using a normed selection process and minimizing bias in the hiring process. We also believe that Pittsburgh can simultaneously invest in ensuring that Pittsburgh Public Schools are and continue to be a place where staff of color feel safe and valued. So, we have some recommendations there around retention supports for teachers of color. And finally, we look for an opportunity for Pittsburgh to really solidify a vision for diversification of the workforce across the district, across everyone that works with students in Pittsburgh Public Schools. We'll also just note that we had an opportunity to share some of these findings and recommendations with principals and APs at Pittsburgh schools last week, and we were really excited to have a conversation with them, where we heard them kind of echo quite a few of these findings and recommendations from their own experience and have a chance to speak to some of the things they might invest in doing differently in the future. And I think with that, we will conclude our presentation and just note that we think there is a beautiful strategic plan that really speaks to a lot of this work, and we were so excited to see how much that was informed by our findings and recommendations, and appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I actually have one comment. You alluded to leveraging student groups, student advocacy groups in the hiring process, and I just wanted to express that as a student and as a student involved in some of those organizations, like, namely, the Student Advisory Council, I think that would be something that would be really great, because if our students value having BIPOC teachers, which they do, as your data has shown, I think they would be more willing and resonate more with new hires in that particular context. You guys, I was involved in your study. I did comment, yeah.
That was you.
Uh-huh. Yes, I'm not sure if I had the beard then. Yes. Yes, I was involved in your studies, and I think that that's like really awesome that you're listening to student voices. I'm all for student advocacy, and I think that that will really help you guys out, because we're willing to help you. We really want the same goals that you do.
Thank you.
If I may, the one thing that we did not mention that I would share really quickly is that we did intentionally gloss over the data and methodology piece, but we do have an appendix to use as a supplement if anyone would like to take a look at that, dig more deeply and closely into how we collected data.
Tommy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, do your organization have any data on the success of recruiting teachers of color? Because I'm hearing a lot of, this is what you need to do, this is what you need to do. So, did your organization participate in the recruiting process, the hiring process? You know what I mean? What is your success rate in terms of helping districts accomplish those goals?
Yeah, we're, TNTP is a national organization, so we have about 25 years of experience working with districts in talent recruitment, selection. And I think I will say this is not easy work, and this isn't work that you're going to have done tomorrow. So, we're by no means coming in and saying, like, what needs to happen tomorrow is that you have a teacher workforce that matches the identities of your student workforce. But we are saying that, you know, we have seen success in other districts, and actually even in some of the districts in the Driving Towards Diversity cohort that you all are a part of, that can speak to the fact that they have put strategic measures in place and been able to increase each year the share of teachers of color who are able to enter their workforce.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I guess I'm looking for, you know, what's the best practices that these other districts use that they can share with our district, because obviously, we can learn from each other, so. And then, you know, so I understand, I know the data, and I respect your work that you're doing, but I want to be careful that we don't say to any of our students, you can only learn because a particular person sit in front of you. That's a slippery slope. So, I would just caution us, you know what I mean, when, because you don't want people to misunderstand your data as well. So, let's, I would caution us to, saying we're not saying that you can't learn because a person of color is not in front of you. You know, obviously, it helps, but it's not the deciding factor when it comes to learning and when it comes to expectation of education. So, I just, I just thought I'd want to bring that out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Any other questions? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, new principal introductions.
Okay. Tonight, I've invited, well, I've invited four principals who are new to their roles but not necessarily new to Pittsburgh, and tonight, we have three of those four present with us. Tanya Jarrett couldn't make it tonight. She's feeling under the weather. Tanya Jarrett is the interim principal up at Pittsburgh High School, and she had previously been the assistant principal at Pittsburgh High School. But we have three other principals with us tonight, and I guess I'll just go from sitting closest to the front row to sitting in the back row. So, Mr. Pierce, you draw the short straw here if you'd like to just come up and introduce or reintroduce yourself to the school committee in terms of the new school where you're at here.
So, I'm really not new to Pittsburgh. I think the only person that has more time than me is Mr. Stevens. I think, I don't even know, I don't even know how long he's been here, but...
He has more time than Mr. Stevens. I say that in a good way.
So, my name is Mark Pierce, new principal at Long Joe Middle School. Last four years, I was a principal at McKay Arts Academy, and then before that, 20 years at Pittsburgh High School. So, graduate of Pittsburgh High School, been teaching in Pittsburgh now for 29 years.
Lucky to have you.
Thank you.
And just because I had him in school, he was in the middle school.
So, I'm feeling old now too, because a lot of my students now that I have, their parents were my students, so. I haven't hit the grandparent one yet, but anyways, so.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
So, next up, I'd like to ask Sue Tingas, principal of McKay, to come forward and, I guess, reintroduce herself or talk about her new role.
Hi, I'm Sue Tingas. I'm the new principal at McKay Elementary School. For six years previous to that, I was the assistant principal at South Street Elementary School, and before that, I was a special education teacher in Lowell for 19 years.
Great. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, is Monica Poitras. Monica is returning to Pittsburgh, but same school, but we changed the school for you, Monica.
Oh, thank you. I was so excited. You have no idea. A little bit back my background, so I was here 10 years ago as the principal of South Street, and before that, I was the assistant principal. It was actually my first admin role when I got my admin license was at South Street. And then, I spent 10 years in Worcester, and when I saw this job come up, I said, this is my dream job. I'm so excited to have our little ones and get a school up and running. It's been very exciting, and I think I've lost five pounds since I've started, and I think the rest of my staff has too, so, but we're very excited. I'm very excited to be back in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Welcome back, Monica.
Welcome back, Monica. So, thank you. Next up, we're going to do a little summary of the last year's MCAS results. This is a preliminary summary. The results were released last Thursday at noon by the Department of Ed, and I guess I'll just wait for FATV to queue up the presentation, which looks like it's in process. That's John, yeah, well, we'll get started. We'll tag team this, so. I don't know if John, they're waiting for John to... Well, I guess I'll just start off without the slides to be respectful of everybody's time here. So, last year was another year like no other at a state level, and the MCAS results across the state were mixed compared to 2021 scores. The math scores increased statewide, the English language arts scores declined, and the science scores were approximately the same. When we look at these, last year's results compared to 21, or actually, 2019 pre-pandemic levels, we still have a ways to go across all subject areas to fully recover from the pandemic. This isn't unique to Massachusetts or to Pittsburgh. It's actually happened across the country. For the English language arts, two specific areas, again, this is at the state level, are the lower writing scores and early literacy challenges. One thing that impacted Pittsburgh, along with many other communities, across the Commonwealth and across the nation, was student absenteeism. Again, in Pittsburgh and many states and across the country, we followed the guidance that was in place, and we'll talk a little bit more about the attendance coming up here. So, tonight, after I go through the, just the state slides here, and there's only just one more after this, there are a few different ways that Department of Ed assesses or evaluates school districts. One is on a meet-and-exceed basis in terms of meeting, there's four categories on various tests. There's meeting, there's exceeding, there's partially meets, and then there's needs improvement. So, when, the other metric is it looks how a student has grown over the year, and if the screen will stay active.
Doesn't like my computer.
I know, John. I like your phone jacked there to help. You know, what we typically look for in the school district is for student growth percentile to be in the 40% to 60% range, which is typical growth, and as... which is typical growth. And as we'll show in a little bit more detail following, that our students showed that growth as a result of some focused teaching across the school district. Again, as I alluded to earlier, and this is statewide, state slide, Department of Ed slide, students were in school less or they missed more school in 2022 than in 2021. The average number of days missed in 2021 was 11 days. Last year it was 15 days. 18% of all students missed 18-plus days in 2021 and 28% missed 18-plus days in 2022. Chronic absenteeism, which is defined as 10% or more of days for students in grades three through eight, increased by 138% in 2022. So again, statewide, 41,000 in 2021 versus 98,000. Again, compared to, not 98,000 in 2022 versus 41,000 in 21. So cumulatively across the state, there was 1.7 million days of missed school because of COVID, because of positive COVID-19 cases. To be clear, and just, this does not include staff absences or days missed as close contacts. And one, on a positive note, that, you know, testing program across the state helped retain students in school by about 1 million days.
I think one of the highlights Bob talked a lot about is not only did we have, I mean, throughout the Commonwealth, 1.7 million days of school missed by students, you got to then factor in those days with teachers too, when teachers were out. So there's a lot of time last year that students missed receiving instruction because a student was out or because a teacher was out. So that's, that's a very big piece of data.
Explain to me that, what does that mean? More than one, the last line, were saved? What does that mean? The very last line here?
Yeah, so I'll, yeah, I'll do my best. So, Mr. Reynolds, in Fitchburg and in many school districts across the state, we had a, well, we call it pool testing, but we would have students who opted in to be tested participate on a weekly basis in a PCR test. So through that, the state estimates that a million school days across the state amongst the school age population was saved. So now we're going to shift to Fitchburg data and really what I'm going to compare here is our results from 2022 as measured by what's called a state's schools accountability rating. The federal government asks all schools or all states to rank schools from 100 percentile to the one percentile. 100 being the highest rating. And again, schools have to fall in a percentile as a function or a result of their standardized test scores, which incorporate a variety of factor, attendance being one, student growth percentile, and lastly, the actual results on the tests. So the highlight here is really that all of our schools, except one, grew from 2019, which is the last pre-pandemic year of testing, to 2022. And two of the schools that were in the, below the 10th percentile and required the district to have oversight or involvement from the Department of Ed have now exited that category. Those two schools who exited that category are Fitchburg High School that moved from the ninth percentile statewide to the 16th percentile, and that's the highest percentile ever that Fitchburg High School has attained. Correct, Mr. Roach?
Yes.
So congratulations to the Fitchburg High team of students and staff because you all played a part in this, these results here. You worked hard and those results show. Memorial, a few years ago, had received a school redesign grant from the Department of Ed, which was just under a million dollars, spread out over three years. So Memorial went from being in the, actually, the third percentile in 2018. I don't have the 2018 results here on this slide, but they went from the third percentile to the fifth percentile and lastly to the 20th percentile. And I think Mr. Thompson will talk about, unlike the state trends, they showed progress on the literacy front, the writing front.
Yes, all our, our schools showed progress, specifically our elementary schools, some of our elementary schools around writing. If you look at our grade three and four writing scores, Fitchburg Elementary Schools in grades three and four had higher writing scores than the state, which was actually nice to see since the state actually pointed out that writing went down throughout the Commonwealth. So Fitchburg and some of our grades tested higher than the state average in writing, which was great to see.
And, well, I guess, that's okay, we can move on, but across the elementary school grade level, we had strong results and I want to just, maybe just highlight quickly, Rhinegold, which, just go along here, thank you. Back in 2018, we had five schools under that 10th percent, you know, rating category. Rhinegold was ranked in the fourth percentile. That school year, Adam Renda took a special assignment from Crocker Elementary, went over to Rhinegold, put in some systems. That Rhinegold increased from the fourth percentile to the 26th percentile in 2019. And Principal Sparks, who's with us tonight, continued that trend and last year's results had Rhinegold at the 42nd percentile of schools statewide. So again, congratulations to Mr. Sparks, the leadership team at Rhinegold, but all, again, also the staff and students for putting in the hard work. And again, across the district during one of the most difficult years in public education, our students and staff worked extremely hard and those, those results, those efforts are being demonstrated here tonight. So one thing that we like to do is compare, or whether we like to do it or not, we're compared to the state. And then also, there is a cohort that we, I'll say informally belong to because we are a city school district in Massachusetts. We have, we participate in an urban network. And Department of Ed performed some analysis when these results were complete, comparing the urban averages to the state averages in summary categories of English language arts in grades three through eight and math three through eight, along with high school sophomore, English language arts and math for grade 10. So what we have before us tonight are the results from 2019, which we can call our base year, then 2021, when we went back to having the standardized MCAS test, and then this most recent year's results, 2022. And what's really important is to look at the change from 19 to 21 and, but also the change from 21 to 22, where, as I mentioned earlier, is where, you know, the staff and students from Fitchburg really worked hard and showed improvement versus either state or urban peers in, I think, all of the summary categories when you compare the changes of last year. And again, these, those numbers there were all considered in the meets and exceeds categories. So beginning, well, I think it started at the end of last school year, going back to being one of the benefits of the urban superintendent's network is it's an opportunity for great networking and learning. And at the March meeting, we had a presentation from an organization or a company called Open Architecture. And what they do is they upload, or they have a tool that takes the upload of state MCAS results and puts it into, well, their MCAS Explorer tool. This is the menu of the five different tools that we now utilize. And I'm going to show you in the next few slides, just some sample reports that we can generate from the MCAS Explorer. But basically, this is a huge time saver for all our principals where they don't have to worry about crunching numbers out of spreadsheets and classrooms and percentiles. And I like to say that, you know, this tool makes people's lives easier or gives, gives you more time in your day. And it doesn't have to make everybody an expert in Excel either, right? So again, just the other tool that we have available that looks at standardized tests is the Access Explorer. And then the others, I think we upload information on a daily basis.
Yeah, so they're automated uploads that actually pull data from our student management system, Aspen X2. So each night, the data is uploaded from our system and then this open architecture database takes that and presents the data into these bar graphs and charts for us to access. I think really what's also great about this tool, it's in one location. We're not logging into all the different platforms that we use and having to go and, you know, remember our passwords and all that. It's all in one spot now. The other thing that will be coming next month is it's going to take all our data, our student data from the different online assessments that we use and actually be located here also so we can have all our information right here in one click. So it's a great tool. Really glad we found it and that we are using it this year, so.
Okay. So the next handful of slides are really just examples of what this open architecture tool can provide. This first snapshot here is really just a picture of proficiency, which is meets, meet and exceeds on English language arts in grades three through eight. Actually, this is, this is all the schools because Fitchburg High is listed here. So this says all grades, all our schools, and it gives a five-year summary going back to 2017. So we can look at a real high level in terms of each school, how their results were in several categories. What you also see is, you know, the grades, we could look at specific grades, we can look at subjects, you know, English, math and science, and then we can also look at different demographics. And then we also have, looking at the top of the legend there, students. We can look at some plots that have plots of students and we can look at who was close to being proficient on the standardized test to see what we need to do in the following year. So again, this is just the sample for the English language arts proficiency. Then again, we also track the student growth percentile. Again, as I mentioned earlier, having growth range of between 40 and 60 is normal. And, you know, if you don't have your reading glasses on, I can tell you that all our schools were in the 40 to 60 range, actually 41.3 through, actually Goodrich at 66.3, but Memorial at 59.5, South Street at 56.5, and Crocker at 50, just, just a few examples here.
So what's really great is we're right where we need to be around making student growth. We're all at typical growth, which the state says anywhere between 40 and 59 or 60 is typical growth, which is great. So it's good to see.
Again, similarly, math, and again, just, you know, as was mentioned earlier in the state, and you could look, go back and look at how the state results were in math. Math was a little bit harder to be taught during the pandemic across all grade levels. But again, same functionality, our ability to drill down beyond this high level data is really just unparalleled and very useful for us as we move forward. Again, proficiency and the student growth percentiles is what we show here. And again, you know, without the reading glasses, just about all our schools were between that 40 and 60% growth, growth range. That's it. Okay. So that's it. Over the next month, we'll be unpacking some of the detail across various student subgroups, looking at individual students. We're tentatively planning to have the schools come back to school committee, the first school committee meeting in November.
Yep. Will be the elementary group and then the second school committee in November will be the middle and high school group. The principals will be here to give you their overview of their analyzation of MCAS scores this past year and then talk to you about their school improvement plans and their goals for the year.
To be commended, outstanding advances, particularly in the middle of a pandemic. So great, great job. Congratulations. Thank you.
Just like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. Comment was made in last school committee meeting about the goals of the Fitchburg school system. Are they just words on a paper? I think what shows our goals, our professional development, our curriculum and our teacher training and the job that our teachers have done, that the goals are not just words on the paper, but our teachers and administration have produced and it shows. Thank you, Mr. Jokel.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. That's all I have right now for the MCAS update. Again, more information to follow in future school committee meetings in terms of how we're looking at the data and setting our goals across the grade levels for the future. And, you know, and as you mentioned, Mr. Stevens, we're also beginning our Teacher Leadership Academy. We had our first.
Meeting today.
First meeting today and we're expanding the mentoring program this year for new teachers. So, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, so we, we've done a lot around looking at what teachers really need in the district. We've had some surveys sent out to teachers that are new to our district and had some small group discussions with new teachers and we revamped our, our program based on what they've asked for, more support and more time to meet, to plan together. So right now, our facilitator, Becky Mackey, is running our new teacher mentor program and she meets, this year she's meeting with the elementary group one day a month and then the middle and high school group one day a month to really work on what they need to become effective teachers in Fitchburg. So this year, we've decided to actually use a mentor text to support their learning throughout the year. And this mentor text, and of course, I never can remember the name of the book, actually breaks down what a teacher really needs to do each month during the school year. And what we're doing is we are actually supporting those teachers using this book and we're also training their mentee, the veteran teachers that working with them on what to do or how to support that work with their mentor this year. So a lot of good things happening. We're excited to actually have Becky on board, working with our teachers. And we've had some really, really good feedback so far. So we hope to continue to improve the program as we move through the school year.
So I guess just lastly, before moving on, again, like you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to, again, thank the staff and the students for doing the hard work during a very difficult time. The efforts that we put in last year will make this year a little bit easier and we'll continue, you know, this year we'll be able to continue that momentum. You know, as we, the state looks at recovery, we're looking at help our students accelerate here. So thank you to all the principals here and at home and the teachers and everybody, paraprofessionals. Everybody deserves part of the success. And for those who I would say who are really interested in comparing our results and our elementary results, you can compare them to some local peer districts and in some cases, our schools, our elementary schools and middle schools actually have better results than some of our neighboring peer districts. So that's a good selling point for the city. So, Mr. Mayor, I turn to Mr. Roach for the security update and then the budget items.
Great. So first, congratulations to the school, students, faculty, staff as well. It's outstanding. It's very satisfying to see results like that for the hard work that I know goes into it. In terms of security, as part of the Crocker Elementary School Core Project, working with the MSBA, one of the aspects of it is the surveillance, the surveillance system at the school. We have had numerous meetings as part of the building committee about that and the recommendation, in conjunction with Fitchburg Police Department as well. recommendation, in conjunction with Fitchburg Police Department as well. In, in recent meetings we've had, the recommendation is to pursue a proprietary system that would integrate with the Fitchburg Police Department system. As part of that process, with MSBA, they don't have a problem necessarily. When a school pursues a proprietary system, they just ask that we run it through our school committee, and then ultimately, that building committee. So what we're looking to do is to integrate the access control system, which is LNL-S2 On Guard system, with the video surveillance system, which is currently the XACU Vision technology. Again, that would just integrate seamlessly with Fitchburg PD's current system, so that in the event of a very serious incident, Fitchburg Police Department would have access. Pretty standard. It does not, it does not limit the capacity for Crocker Elementary School to shift to a different system, because we would own the system, so we would have the full capacity to be able to shift to a different system if there was better cameras down the road, five years, six years, seven years, if there was a better network system, which is essentially the access control system. So, so again, part of the procedure with MSBA, and we know they're very procedural, is that the school committee considers this request, again, which has been done over various meetings with that Crocker Elementary School Core Project Building Committee, and in conjunction with Fitchburg PD, that we approve the superintendent's recommendation to commence inquiry into, inquiry into that proprietary surveillance system, which would be integrated to Fitchburg PD. So I leave it to the committee to consider.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, well, you're gonna go through budget items.
Well, if, if, yeah, if we could, I think on that one, we do have to have an official vote.
Yeah.
Per the MSBA.
We're gonna vote on all the action items.
Okay, great. So, so the first would be that, that item related to the proprietary system.
Yeah.
Then the second aspect are, are grants that we would be looking to submit and grants to accept. So grants to submit would be approving the superintendent's recommendation, which would be number 22-201. There are six. It is the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program, in the amount of $120,000, which would support local school and district efforts to strengthen and diversify existing teacher recruitment and retention programs. In addition, the targeted assistance grant, which is $95,000, which supports goals for increasing student achievement at McKay, Long Joe, Memorial, and Fitchburg High School. The Mass Grad Grant, which is in the amount of $23,000, which provides academic, clinical, and career services provided to individual students and families of Goodrich Academy. The Andrew Lloyd Webber Initiative, which could be up to $50,000, which would provide resources to support drama programs at Memorial Middle School. The New England First WPI STEM Week Grant, which would provide professional development for teacher and implementation materials as well, to support STEM and robotics programming at Memorial Middle School. And the Proficiency-Based Outcomes in Languages Other Than English Grant, in the amount of $26,380, which supports world language, heritage language, dual language, and English language learner programs. Those are grants to submit, and there is one grant to accept, which is the McKinney-Vento Grant, in the amount of $20,000, which supports district initiatives to serve our McKinney-Vento, which is homeless student population.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. I'd like to take these up individually. There aren't, there aren't many, so let's do that, that way. 22-200, approve the superintendent's recommendation to commence inquiry into proprietary surveillance systems that can be integrated with the Fitchburg Police Department's systems. Motion? Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to accept 22-200. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All, all opposed, seeing none, is unanimous. 22-201, approve the superintendent's recommendation to submit the following grants. You just heard Mr. Roach mention those.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. 22-202, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the following grants, McKinney-Vento of $20,000.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. 22-203, approve the school committee's nominee.
I wish to nominate Mr. Peter Stevens.
Nomination made for Mr. Peter Stevens. Do I hear any following further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tom Hughes.
Nominate Tom Hughes, all right. Do I hear a second on that? Nomination of, of Mr. Hughes? I second it. Okay. I guess we need to cut, this has never happened before. We have to come to, we have to come to a vote, ladies and gentlemen.
Tom, are you going to the conference?
What's that?
Will you go to the conference?
The conference. Absolutely.
Well, all right, we have.
Only back and forth with Pete, bro.
You're gonna defer to Pete? Good move. You could be, you can be the alternate, Tom.
I can be the alternate.
All right. How's that?
That sounds good to me.
So we don't need a vote, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay, good, Tom, thanks. Nominee of Mr. Stevens as a delegate for the 2022 MasAC Mass Joint Conference, number number second to the fifth, 2022.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. And 22-204, approve the school committee's nominee, Mr. Thomas Hughes, as alternate delegate for the 2022 MasAC Mass Joint Conference, number second to the fifth, 2022.
Make a motion.
Motion made. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Is unanimous. Executive session is not needed at this time.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.